For the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Jason Zimmerman here this morning, who is going to lead us in the pledge. Jason is currently serving as the Financial Officer for Post 665 Dixon City and in the Dixon City Honor Guard. Jason served for 14 years as Sergeant E5 in the United States Army from 1998 to 2012. During his time, Jason served twice in Operation Iraqi Freedom and was injured in Afghanistan, and he currently lives in South Abington Township, and we're honored to have you here today.
Thank you, sir. All right. If you're a veteran, present arms. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Order arms. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last Commissioner's meeting.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the minutes have been approved. Opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only. Would anyone like to discuss the agenda items? Sir?
Good morning. I just want to provide a quick comment on ordinance 299. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Chris Fay. I serve as the Government Affairs Director for the Greater Scranton Board of Realtors. Our members live and work throughout Lackawanna County, and we are deeply committed to the long-term health and stability of our communities. We recognize that the proposed $15 deed recording fee for a county blight demolition program comes from a genuine desire to address a serious challenge. Blight impacts property values, public safety, and overall quality of life, and tackling is a goal we also share with you. That being said, our board cannot support the ordinance in this format. It is estimated that the proposal could generate approximately $150,000 in revenue annually, but it would do so by adding a cost to every property transaction. This means responsible homeowners, buyers and sellers, including those with no connection to neglected or abandoned properties, would be paying to address issues created by a small number of irresponsible owners. Additionally, we are also concerned about the impact on affordability. Even modest fees can compound when combined with transfer taxes, permitting costs, title charges, and other closing expenses. For first-time buyers, seniors, and working families, these added costs can become real barriers to homeownership. If the commissioners decide to move forward, we strongly urge that vulnerable individuals, such as first-time homebuyers, be exempt from the fee. We also strongly recommend that a sunset provision be included so that programs can be formally evaluated after a set period. We recognize that the ordinance specifies funds are collected to be used simply for blight reduction, but we believe that if this is to move forward, those funds should be fully utilized for that purpose before any additional funding is collected. We remain committed to working with you to find solutions that restore neighborhoods while protecting housing affordability. It is important that those transferring properties in Lackawanna County can do so without being burdened by costs for issues they did not create, and we encourage the commissioners and the county to explore alternative funding strategies that address blight without adding costs to every transaction. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Would anyone like to address the board on agenda items only?
I, ditto to everything that gentleman just said, and thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Although I don't support it at all, no matter...
Excuse me. Could you just state your name for the record so we have it in the minutes?
Lorraine Cummings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I was very disappointed not to see anything about this in the paper up until today. I don't know if it was in on a Monday, but because that's online, so I don't get that. But I've been watching the paper to see if this was in it, so that people can know that this is a backdoor tax on the residents again, and we've already had enough increases in our taxes. So, I hope that you vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board on agenda items only? Okay, thank you. First up is ordinance 25-0202.
Commissioners, this is the second reading of ordinance 299. The ordinance of the Board of Commissioners, Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania pursuant to Act 87 of 1982 as amended, establishing a county demolition fund imposing a fee to be collected by Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds on recorded deeds and mortgages and providing for severability, repeal, or an effective date, whereas the Recorder of Deeds Fees Laws, Act 87 of 1982, establish fees for the services of recording deeds, and whereas the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Legislature has enacted Act 152 of 2016, amending Act 87 to allow boards of commissioners to create a demolition fund for the express purposes of removing blighted property within the county, and whereas the amendment also permits the Board of Commissioners to authorize the Recorder of Deeds to collect a fee up to $15 for each deed and/or mortgage that is recorded, and whereas the county commissioners of Lackawanna County believe it is in the best interests of the residents of the county to create and authorize a demolition fund for blighted properties in Lackawanna County, be it hereby ordained and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County pursuant to its authority under Pennsylvania Act 87, 1982, as amended by Act 152 of 2016 as follows: The within ordinance may be referred to here and herein elsewhere as the demolition fund ordinance effective. As the final adoption of this ordinance, a Lackawanna County demolition fund shall be established by the Lackawanna County Treasurer pursuant to Act 152, 2016. Effective is December 1, 2025, which is not less than 90 days after the effective date of this ordinance, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners authorizes and directs the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds to collect a fee in the amount of $15 for each and every deed and mortgage recorded in their office. Each and every document shall be subject to said fee in the amount of $15. Any and all funds collected by the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds pursuant to this ordinance shall be promptly deposited in the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds into a designated fund for the exclusive purposes of the Lackawanna County Demolition Fund. Funds deposited and maintained in the Lackawanna County Demolition Fund shall be administered by the Lackawanna County Land Bank. Effective date of this ordinance shall be effective as of December 1, 2025. Mr. Chairman, this is the second reading of ordinance 299, and therefore it's up for a vote today.
And here to speak on that, do you want to just give a recap of...
Sure.
...the Director of Economic Development and Planning, Kristin Magnotta?
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Commissioners. Act 152, as was stated, is an ordinance to address blight. This act incorporates a fee of $15 for each deed or mortgage recorded. The collected fee will be channeled into a dedicated county demolition fund exclusively earmarked for demolition of blighted properties within the county, and will be overseen by our land bank. As of December 3 of 2024, 26 Pennsylvania counties have implemented this demolition fund successfully. And if we were to have this ordinance in place in 2024, we would have had $174,105 in this to be able to work with municipalities, nonprofits, for-profits, and residents to be able to address blighted properties within their neighborhoods. And also, just for the record, I stand corrected on my previous statements regarding liens. Though we are currently working through the program guidelines and will be meeting with both solicitors to do so, the guidelines are yet to be firmed up, but liens will need to be a part of this in order for the county to recoup costs of the demolition when the properties sell.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
So, questions for me? Because I didn't really think about first-time homebuyers, things like that. Is that something that can be done? Can we look in low-income housing, the people that have low income that are buying homes? I mean, is there anything in there for that that we can do or that we can add? Are there any other things we can do?
I think that maybe that is something that we can discuss while we are going through the guidelines with the solicitors. I think because we don't have guidelines firmed up just yet, we can probably look at multiple scenarios of how we can... This can be still impactful, but yet not be a burden.
Yeah, I think that is definitely something I would like to look at, and people have to understand too that, you know, you get calls every day. We have 40 municipalities that we deal with on a daily basis. Most of them can't afford to pave their streets and fix things that they need to fix. Blighted properties are an issue throughout Lackawanna County and other counties. And it is a quality-of-life issue, and it's, you know, besides just being eyesores and things like that, it's dangerous for the kids that are around, and it attracts unwanted, undesirable sometimes that are milling around. But, you know, this is something that we looked at over time, and it's not something we just dreamed up. Other counties do have something in place. And the other issue too is if, you know, if our folks from the real estate businesses here can help us out with some other ideas and what we can do moving forward, you know, this doesn't have to last forever. You know, we can eliminate it. It could have a sunset on it at some point, but the fact of the matter is, we get calls all the time on this, and nobody has... Again, the municipalities don't have the money to deal with these structures that are dangerous and everything else that they are. Every time I turn on the news, there's a structure fire somewhere, abandoned house, structure fire, building, structure fire. So, it's something that we have to look at, and if we can put into the guidelines here on something for our first-time homebuyers, low-income homebuyers, whatever other programs that are out there that maybe would help in that realm, I think it would be something I would definitely be interested in. I'm, you know, regards what everybody... Some of my folks here don't agree with, but I do agree with this, and I think we need to address it. I mean, it's an issue in every municipality. So, you know, I think we need to talk about some details before we carve this in the stone.
Commissioner, we can certainly create exemptions under it, because it's our fee that we're imposing, so we would have a right to exempt or create carve-outs if we needed to do that.
And I think that would be good. And down the road, if our real estate folks have some thoughts on what we can do, I'm open to all suggestions to help out, because, let's face it, the more blighted properties we eliminate, these properties get sold, get back on the tax rolls, it increases property values in those neighborhoods and in these municipalities. So, you know, I'm open to any suggestion, so... But I appreciate you coming up and speaking and bringing that, especially the first-time homebuyer thing, to my attention. So, thanks.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. On the question, I agree with Commissioner Chermak. This is a great program. 26 other counties have done it successfully in the state of Pennsylvania. If you are struggling to buy a home, we have the first-time homebuyers program that I believe is run through NeighborWorks.
NeighborWorks, correct?
Right. And if I'm not mistaken, they cover all the closing costs up to a certain amount, which I'm assuming that this $15 fee would be included in. And to be honest with you, I don't think $15 is prohibitive or excessive in any way. I mean, that's a couple cups of coffee over the course of a week, and as Commissioner Chermak stated, the net benefit here is going to be huge, because there are communities up and down this valley who cannot afford to take down these dilapidated properties, and then they just sit there, and they cause more problems, and they cause crime, and on and on and on. So, I appreciate the gentleman that got up to speak, but I think the benefits outweigh the negatives in this case.
Also, on the question.
You know, there's always a lot of comments after the fact that, you know, Billy and I agree on everything, we vote together, and, you know, we're all... Look at, we don't agree on everything. I don't agree with everything with my wife half the time, so... But you know what? We're doing business here for Lackawanna County. What's the best interest of the folks in Lackawanna County? I don't look at whose registration or who... I'm looking at every person in Lackawanna County that I have to deal with. That's important to me. This is an issue throughout the county, throughout many other counties, obviously. So, our voting record, I don't care what it is. I don't care if it's 99%. That's because 99% of the things we do here are day-to-day operations of Lackawanna County and any other county. So, you know, if somebody has a problem with my voting record or what I'm agreeing with, that's too bad, because I'm trying to do what's best for Lackawanna County, whether Republican, independent, Democrat, non-voter, it doesn't matter. I work for everyone here. Bill works for everyone here in Lackawanna County, and that's just the way it goes, so...
Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the ordinance has been approved. Resolution 25-0203.
Approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby to approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 389-591-3890-3847, inclusive totaling $2,902,420.13. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $3,919,817.09. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 20, 2025. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0204.
Entering into a memorandum of understanding. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Office of the District Attorney for Lackawanna County for the development, implementation, and operation of the community service program within Lackawanna County. MOU effective immediately and shall remain in effect for a period of 10 years. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 20, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the county's district attorney, Mr. Brian Gallagher.
Good morning. I'm here to request that the commissioners enter a memorandum of understanding with the DA's office for a reboot of the community justice or community service program. Most of you recall that prior to COVID-19, going back a significant number of years, we had a community service program run out of the DA's office, but unfortunately, because of the restrictions, it went by the wayside. I'm requesting that the commissioners enter into this MOU to reestablish their program for the benefit of the various communities that comprise Lackawanna County. The statistical data that we accumulated and tracked shows that prior to COVID, the DA's office program saved taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars in routine maintenance projects throughout the county. For instance, in 2017, 27,000 hours of community service were performed by 528 defendants. Community service hours were completed at 849 different organizations throughout Lackawanna County that totaled over $652,000 worth of services that this program generated for the various communities in Lackawanna County. The community justice program provides the means for those charged or convicted of low-level nonviolent crimes within Lackawanna County criminal justice system to be assigned community service hours pursuant to a probationary sentence or in lieu of fines for a specified number of hours in service to townships, boroughs, municipalities, or local nonprofit organizations. As part of the program, the community service will be ordered by common pleas judges, magistrates, or parts of plea agreements or ARD programs, which is very common and that everyone sees, for a low-level DUI offense. This program is part of the accountability and rehabilitative prongs of the criminal justice system and helps those who make low-level, nonviolent mistakes an opportunity to clean up and put something back into the various communities that comprise our county. Again, this completes the rehabilitative process and allows offenders to be part of something that's greater than themselves and will reduce recidivism. There's no additional cost to the county. My office currently has the capacity to rebuild what was once a really positive thing. The organizations that would be served are any borough, township, municipality, city, nonprofit groups, churches of any denomination, or little leagues that wish to participate in it. Each prong of the criminal justice system is in support of this: the Lackawanna County public offenders, the court of common pleas, adult probation and parole, and it benefits not only the county, but the actual offender in rehabilitation. So, I'd answer any questions anyone has in that regard.
Any questions?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. On the question, I just want to thank our district attorney, Brian Gallagher, for bringing this program back. This program, pre-COVID, as he stated, it was extremely successful, and as commissioners, it's our job to work with the district attorney to build safer communities. And the truth is that nothing makes a community safer than breaking the cycle of recidivism. When people contribute to their neighborhoods, they develop pride, purpose, and a sense of belonging, and that's how we reduce repeat offenses. So, this is legitimately a win-win. Our towns and boroughs benefit from needed hands-on work. Our nonprofits and civic organizations gain a lot of volunteers, which they always need, and most importantly, I think, those who made mistakes are given the chance to repay their debt in a way that builds character and benefits the community. So, again, all the credit here should go to Brian Gallagher for bringing this program back, having the foresight to bring it back, and we appreciate his hard work on this, so thank you.
And I also appreciate that, and, you know, this gives these folks a sense of pride. Don't leave on me yet. You're two... This guy runs from point A to point B, everything. You don't have to come back to the state. But really, I just want to thank you. It brings back a sense of pride to these folks, and again, this is one of the 99% of the things that I vote on here, and why would I not approve this? This is good for the community, and it's good for what you're trying to do, so thank you.
I appreciate you keeping up with us. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0205.
Entering into an agreement with the University of Scranton. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entered into an agreement with the University of Scranton for an internship program. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 20, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Human Resources Director, Ms. Joanne Decker.
Good morning. This is just an agreement between the county and the University of Scranton in connection with our internship program. This agreement will set the rules and responsibilities between the county and the university for the students' field experience. The county wants to continue to collaborate with the university to establish the educational objectives for the students' field experience and to make our employees and facilities available for that purpose. Last year, the county had 20 interns in various departments, so we'd like to continue that for this year and next as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for Director Decker?
No, and just because we talked about this too, and it's not just... The university is not the only school that we use for interns, it's just they're the one asking for the...
Correct. They specifically wanted the site agreement, but we do use other schools, universities in the county.
Yep. That's just so everybody knows that we...
Correct, yeah.
...will take interns from other schools too, so...
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. On the question, I want to thank our HR Director for reviving the internship program. It's been hugely successful. We've had some really great interns across almost every department in the county, and they have made meaningful contributions, and we're glad to help them as well, give them the experience in county government, and also hope that when they're done and when they graduate, if there's a spot here, we can bring them back to work for the county. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Joanne Decker. She will be leaving us on September 2, I think.
Yes.
Unfortunately, she's taking another position, but in my short time here, a year and a half, you cannot find really anybody like her. She's very unique in the fact that she's an extremely hard worker. A lot of things you don't see because she does it behind the scenes, but you really, really did a wonderful job here. We are going to miss her tremendously, and I just wanted to publicly thank you for all the time and the effort that you put in here in this county, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you guys.
Also, I want to thank you as well. It's been great working with you, and don't change your cell phone number.
I won't. Thank you guys. It's been great working with you guys, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0206.
Entering into a license agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entered into a license agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center, 420 North Washington Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, on behalf of the Lackawanna County Tax Claim Bureau for the September 2025 Upset Tax Sale. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 20, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Tax Claim Director, Ms. Barb Lindy.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is a contract between the Tax Claim Bureau and the Scranton Cultural Center for rental of Chaplin Hall on September 22 to conduct the upset tax sale at the cost of $1,040. Each bidder is charged $35 registration fee, so this fee will absorb the total cost of this contract.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Lindy? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-0207.
Entering into cooperation agreement with the Borough of Taylor. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County hereby enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Taylor. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County do hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Taylor Borough Schleger Street Improvement Project to American Asphalt, 500 Chase Road, Shaver Town, Pennsylvania, 18708. The lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder for $373,400. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 20, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Magnotta.
Thank you, Chief. As was stated, this is a CDBG project for Schleger Street improvements in Taylor Borough with a total contract of $373,400. The project involves full-depth milling, asphalt resurfacing, drainage improvements, and other associated street upgrades. Again, this is a CDBG-funded project, therefore it's no cost to the county, and it's time-sensitive as this project must be completed by 9/22/25.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Magnotta? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0208.
Entering into a cooperation agreement with Dixon City Borough. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Dixon City. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna do hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Dixon City Bernard Seminsky Memorial Park Development Project to St. First Keat Paving Company, the lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder for $87,000. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 20, 2025. Mr. Chairman, once again, here's Director Magnotta.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As was stated, this legislation authorizes the commissioners to execute a subrecipient agreement with the Borough of Dixon City for the Bernard Seminsky Improvement Project, and those funds were for 2020 CDBG program in the amount of $87,000. Given it's a CDBG program, there's no cost to the county for this. The project's preliminary goal is to make the Bernard Seminsky Park Trail fully compliant with the ADA, which is Americans with Disabilities Act, ensuring safe, equitable access for individuals of all abilities. Again, this is no cost to the county, and this project is time-sensitive and is due on 9/22/2025.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Magnotta? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0209.
Approving the Office Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby to approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Services Professional Service Agreements for the fiscal year '25 through '26 with the following: the CAI Health and Human Services, the Children's Advocacy Center, Geneva Worldwide, the IJIS Institute Outreach Center for Community Resources. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 20, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of OYFS, Ms. Carrie Browning.
Hi. Good morning. These contracts are for consultant services, forensic interviews, interpretation services, a drug and alcohol program, and our independent living program. They are all annual contract renewals, and they are reimbursed at 80% by the state.
Thank you. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and the resolution has been approved. Resolution 25-0210.
Entering into a child welfare information solution data sharing agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entered into a CWIS data sharing agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services for electronic data exchange for 67 Pennsylvania County children and youth agencies. The agreement is to commence August... I'm sorry, October 1, 2025, and expire September 30, 2026. Adopted regularly in the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on August 20, 2025. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that, once again, is Director Browning.
Hi. This is an annual data sharing agreement between the county and the state child welfare information system data sharing agreement for all users to access and maintain CWS[1774.51] Data Sharing Agreement for all users to access and maintain SEWIS data in accordance with applicable Commonwealth of Pennsylvania information technology policies and procedures as set forth in the Commonwealth Business Partners Account Registration Policy. So, it is a mandate by the state, but it's no cost to the county.
Very good. You like to hear those words.
Yeah, right? I never get to say that.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Resolution twenty-five dash zero two one one.
Approving the Office Youth and Family Services Provider Agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Department of Human Services Office of Youth and Family Service Provider Agreements for fiscal year twenty-five through twenty-six as per attached. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Once again, Mr. Chairman here is Director Browning.
Delaware County Emergency Shelter, Forget Me Not, our annual renewal of shelter contracts for dependent and delinquent children. The rate that we're charged depends on the need of the child, and the services are reimbursed at eighty percent by the state. Children's Aid Society, or Mercer County, Children's Choice, Sure, and Professional Family Care Services, the Bear Foundation, and Impact Project are all annual renewal of foster care provider contracts which are needed to maintain the purchased foster care options for the county. The rate that we're charged is determined by the needs of the child, and again, eighty percent reimbursed by the state. Dream Big Youth House, Lighthouse Family Youth Agency, Pure Lux Homes, and Young Lady Butterflies are all new contracts for dependent and delinquent children who are difficult to place and need a group home placement. The rate depends on the needs of the child, and these, too, are reimbursed at eighty percent by the state. Valley Youth House is an annual renewal of an independent living contract for dependent and delinquent children. The rate that we're charged depends on the needs of the child and reimbursed at eighty percent by the state. Adelphi Village, Bethany Home, Clear Vision, Clock Tower School, Community Specialists, Cornell Abraxas, Pieces to Fit, and Summit School are annual renewal contracts for providers for dependent and delinquent children that offer residential services. The rate depends on the service, and these are reimbursed at sixty percent by the state. And finally, the United Neighborhood Centers is an annual renewal of housing contract for dependent children and their families. The rate depends on the needs of the child and are reimbursed at eighty percent by the state.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Director Browning? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second, on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and the resolution has been approved. Thank you very much. Okay, now's the opportunity for the public to address the board. Would anyone like to address the board?
Hi, Michelle Tierney, Glenboro Township. I want to commend both of our commissioners with supporting each other and most specifically, supporting your community that you serve. As the former race director for the Race for the Cure for many, many years, the, at the time, we referred to it as the Work Release Group, the community service that you just approved to reinstate. Without that group, the Race for the Cure, who housed thousands of people in the city of Scranton in the second week of September, they were instrumental in the success that we had for many, many years, and the pride they took in helping us set up and clean up after all those people there who were all touched by cancer, and they themselves took pride in helping us. So, I commend you both for reinstating that. What a win-win for our county. And also, for supporting our children and youth services as much as you do. As a former CASA volunteer, a court-appointed special advocate for abused and neglected children, I've watched Carrie Browning and her whole staff support our children and youth for many, many years. So, our county can only help to continue to serve our children the way they do. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board?
About Bolis Grant, first thing I'd like to do is remind county residents that I file a suit to lower the assessed value of my properties and theirs if they're interested, and injunction to block the twenty-twenty-six assessment increase, which was announced as a thirty-three percent and has much more in many cases. If anyone is interested in joining a class action suit, get in touch with my office, five-seven-zero-three-four-six-seven-six-five-nine. Again, five-seven-zero-three-four-six-seven-six-five-nine. Two, the county used unqualified assessors who applied arbitrary reasoning. The county is being unjustly enriched. Three, did Mr. Gahan decide if he's resigning? How can anyone who serves as a commissioner announce that they're in a public, as a layperson, and cite a riot and avoid accountability, and then switch back to being a commissioner again when he feels like benefit from that title at the King's Protest against our President of the United States? Four, has my offer from the last meeting been considered? My charge assessment was raised by the county's so-called experts from thirty-five thousand to three-point-one million. As I said in the past, I'm offering to sell the county the property for two-point-five million. Given the assessment, it's a great deal. It's a savings of over a half a million dollars. I'd like to see a motion put on the table for that. Finally, I'd like to ask Mr. Gahan how much taxpayer money he's blown through on legal fees for his frivolous fight to get his own personal yes-man on the commission. I can re-request it since it's public information, but I thought Mr. Gahan would know, and he shared that number with us since the taxpayer money, after I'm done speaking, he could give us that answer. Back in March, it was over thirty thousand. For what I could tell you, it wasn't all that much work. Since then, there's been a hearing, a request for the Supreme Court to exercise jurisdiction under its bench, King's Bench power, which had about zero chance of excess. There's an appeal in Commonwealth Court. All of them were losers because they're frivolous. Now, there's a petition to the U.S. Supreme Court to hear an appeal, which is going to be a loser because the Supreme Court isn't going to hear an appeal on Mr. Gahan's frivolous refusal to follow a well-established local law when it doesn't involve a serious US constitutional issue. Mr. Gahan, at least take a guess whether it's over under two-hundred thousand, or you just do not care since it's taxpayer money. You're wasting on a selfish, frivolous flight. After the Supreme Court denies your appeal, and it will, because it isn't the type of subject matter it entertains. And Mr. Gahan knows that my action for you to repay the money to the county is still pending. I warned Lackawanna County that you skunked us in Scranton when you were the council president. Now, you're doing the same in Lackawanna County. One more thing, I'm still undergoing treatment from muscles in a torn ligament in my left shoulder that were torn in my shoulder when Mr. Gahan wrongfully ordered me to be removed from a public meeting without cause so Mr. Cos and the Sheriff's Department can't accept the lawsuit. Have a bad day, Mr. Gahan.
Thank you. Can you just address the cost thing?
The appeal with regard to the appointment of the commissioner hasn't cost the county any money. There's been no legal bills submitted or approved for that. Thank you.
Good morning. Virgil Argento. Kudos to county officials. We just had a positive meeting talking about tackling blight across our county. Officials are on board with a fifteen-dollar fee to help rid neighborhoods of blighted unsafe properties. It's like the broken window theory in action. Plus, we've got a fabulous revision of a program that was idle due to COVID. Now, low-level offenders can get service hours in communities and organizations countywide the help that they need. It's a win-win. It's punishment and community benefit. We need more positive meetings like this, a hundred percent focused on clean neighborhoods, community service, and smart solutions. Let's keep up the momentum. It was a pleasure attending this meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Joan Hodawan in Scranton. It's been several months since Matt McGloin resigned as county commissioner, and it looks like Labor Day is just around the corner. And I'm getting a little bit nervous because I'm wondering if we're going to end, we're going to end up with having to make decisions about a county budget for next year with only two seated commissioners, or even if we down the road get a third commissioner, whether that commissioner is going to abstain from voting if that commissioner has not participated in the preparation of the budget. If memory serves, the draft budget is usually out by around mid-October, and that's about, that's less than six weeks from now. So, here's my question. Consider this scenario. Either we only have two commissioners through, from two, early December, or a third commissioner is appointed and decides to abstain from voting on the budget. Let's assume, then, that we have one yea and one nay. What happens?
They put a boxing ring out on Wyoming Avenue, and then we have to just get up and see who survives.
I'm serious.
I don't know. We can't play what ifs. Here's what I could tell you. Chris and I have sat at this table for several budget hearings now. We're working together on the budget. We'll continue to work together on the budget. I'm confident that we will have a budget.
I hope so, because it is not in the best interests of the residents of the county to go into twenty-twenty-six under that kind of uncertainty. And so, I do hope we get a third commissioner sooner rather than later. But if that poor commissioner is going to be coming in at the last second, that's, that's a heavy lift to say, how do you vote on a budget that you weren't involved with? I'd be very hesitant if that were me. So, let us get a third commissioner, and let's get moving down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan, also. So, just, well, first of all, I have to tell you, I talked to your former optometrist this morning, said to say hello, so I wanted to tell you.
Oh, goody-goody. When are you getting his butt up here?
Whenever the VA tells him. To answer your question specifically, though, if there was never a budget or was no agreement to pass a budget, that's happened before. What happens is the county has to resort to the previous year's budget. That's technically what would happen.
Yeah, there needs to be a plan.
So, right now, look, we're in our budget hearings every, almost every day, sitting with every department, going over every single line item, taking a look at everything that we can, if there's a place to trim, save, cut, whatever, raise if we have to, you know. So, we're looking at every single thing, and hopefully, when we get to the end of these hearings and we get with our finance director and put this stuff on paper, we can, you know, hopefully have an agreeable budget that's going to work for everyone. That's, that's my hope, and I know that's what we're certainly trying to do.
I don't know if this is possible, but one of the things you might consider is if Commissioner wannabes have the time and the desire just to let them observe during some of these work sessions so at least they can know what the issues are. They wouldn't have a vote, and they wouldn't have input. But maybe if, you know, certain people think, you know, they're in the running, offer them the opportunity, whatever is best for the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay, Commissioners of Other Business, Commissioner Chormack?
Well, thanks, everybody, for coming. As you can see, just by today's agenda, it's very simple to anyone that, you know, really takes a hard look at it. There is nothing on this agenda that I could see that where I would say no. I would not say no to what our DA proposed, the stuff that we do for children and youth, the foster care issues that we deal with on a daily basis, which is, I, I don't even know how they deal with all that stuff. The things that we do every day for area on aging. Last meeting, we had, we had voted on something for battery backup systems for the nine-one center. Well, there's a problem. You want to call nine-one and the power's out. Probably a good idea if our battery backup system's working, so I voted yes for that as well. So, pretty much, everything is poop through a goose, as our chief of staff would say in a different way. But these are things that we vote on. This is day-to-day operations. This is stuff that we do. I'm not voting, no, on things that are a day, on a day-to-day, that we do day-to-day here. I want everybody to remember, coming up next week is LaFesta, so, you know, start fasting now so you can eat on the weekend, because I'm looking forward to that. I think that's all I have.
Thank you very much. I just want to spend a minute or two talking about a very serious issue. When we talk about the county budget that we're currently going through and preparing for October, as all of you are, I'm sure, are well aware, we still do not have a state budget that's been passed. So, we get information that's passed down to us from the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, and every county across our state, doesn't matter whether they're commissioners or Republican majority, Democrat majority, every single one of them is sounding the alarm because this budget impasse is going to threaten essential services. I just want to take a second to read from this letter that, that we both received not too long ago. So, the Budget Secretary in Pennsylvania, Uri Munson, issued a formal communication to counties regarding the ongoing state budget impasse outlining the impact of delayed payments from key health and human services departments over the next six weeks. The figures, figures shared are deeply concerning as the inability to finalize the state budget is preventing the distribution of hundreds of millions of dollars to support county-administered human services. There's an impact all over the place, but the biggest impact is in human services. So, just a couple examples, and this applies across the entire state. Fifteen million dollars, fifteen million dollars in delays in quarterly advances for behavioral health services. We just got a letter from Mickey Drutchell, who is in charge of our behavioral health program, that she had to send a letter out to all of the providers in Lackawanna County, basically telling them that they have, we have to stop payment because they're not getting money from, from the state. Three-hundred-and-ninety million dollars in county child welfare payments, three-and-a-half million dollars in quarterly advances from the Human Services Development Fund, twelve-point-eight million dollars in payments to area agencies on aging, and nine, almost ten million dollars in quarterly payments to single county authorities. So, the absence of funding for July and August places a severe burden on a county's ability to operate, and specifically, these agencies. This ongoing uncertainty not only disrupts local operations but threatens the stability of services relied upon by the more vulnerable Pennsylvanians, all while, while the budget remains unresolved. So, I don't bring this up to point blame at anybody because I'm not going to get into the politics of it, but just for our purposes here at the county, as we're developing a budget, and we know that from last year that cash is tight, and it's going to be probably another tight year in terms of ending the year, not having a state budget is a huge deal. And as every day that goes by, I become more and more concerned that we're not going to be able to make certain payments. We're going to have to stop funding, and then we'll have to figure something, another plan out. So, we're communicating with all the department directors. Everybody's well aware of this, but I just want to make sure the public knows that, you know, you might read this in the newspaper, you see it on the news, and you think it doesn't affect you. It does have an effect on all county services, specifically our social services and human services. Other thing I wanted to mention was the UNC, the Cedar Center. I attended the grand opening. That is located in the former Penn Security Bank Building in South Scranton. For those of you who don't know what that project is, it really is one of the great things that has been done in the city of Scranton and in Lackawanna County by UNC. More than a decade of work on this, probably longer than that. This former bank building now provides essential community programs helping residents access opportunity, connect with services, build better futures. You have to see this building to actually understand what's going on. It really is transforming not only Southside, but all of the city of Scranton, and it's just a great program, and I give them all the credit in the world for finishing the project and bringing it home. The annual LaFesta Italiana will be held Labor Day weekend, as everybody is well aware, Friday, August twenty-ninth through Monday, September first, on Courthouse Square in downtown Scranton. The organizers of that event do a great job every year. I know they'll be successful again this year, so if you have a chance, make sure you come to downtown Scranton for that. And the next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, September third, at ten AM at the Dunmore Community Center, fourteen-fourteen Monroe Avenue in Dunmore. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, on the question. All those in favor say aye? Aye. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.